Go without legal. Kevin, you ready? All right, I'd like to welcome everyone out to our Leighton City Council meeting this evening. The date is June 19th and our start time is 7:07. I have to apologize and say thank you very much for your patience. We had a pretty robust work meeting and so we're a little late coming into here, but at the same time, like I said, welcome everyone and I look forward to the meeting. As customary, we do a prayer and a pledge before each meeting. We take turns up here tonight. I do have to excuse Councilmember Roberts due to an illness and so it would have been his turn.
You're supposed to be in all of you.
Excuse me, sir, you're out of line. You can wait. So in this case, I will fill in for Councilmember Roberts. And tonight, we have sitting on the dais with us, one of our youth council. So Davion.
Davion.
Davion, okay. So Davion's actually going to join me in this process. He's actually willing to say the prayer, so I believe we're going to start our meeting with the prayer and then we'll have the pledge afterwards. So I'm going to turn the time over to you.
I have a prayer, I have a prayer, I'm so sorry.
You want? You want to do the pledge instead?
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, we're going to swap. He's going to do the pledge, I will say the prayer. So if you would, bow your heads with me. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be able to gather here this evening as the Leighton City governing body. We're very grateful for our city and for all the abundance that we have. We deeply pray for all those folks within our city that they will be well taken care of. We pray for our first responders and their ability to respond as needed in those emergency situations. We ask thee please to watch over us as we go into the holiday season and understanding the importance of gatherings and having respect for one another and dignity. We ask thee tonight that we may be able to do the city's business in a very controlled and well thought out manner and that this council will be able to make the correct decisions that are placed before them. We thank thee again for all we've been given. We say this dearly, in thy name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Okay, ask me to stand and... Please stand. Please stand and follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Davion. It's fun to have our youth involved with this so that we can, they can have an experience as far as what takes place within our city and the importance of the process, right? So it's learning, it's a good way to learn for them. Council, we don't really, we don't have any minutes to take care of tonight, so I'll go ahead and go down to our municipal events. I know that, like I said, with the holidays coming up, we've got a lot of different things going on. Typically, Councilmember Roberts would announce our Parks and Rec activities coming up, so I'll go ahead and fill in on that. We want to encourage everyone, obviously, to participate in the July 4th holiday. There's a lot of stuff going on that morning. We start out with the Fun Run, which is a 5K. It's a more fun, less run as well, so it can accommodate all ages. We ask that you pre-register with the Parks and Rec Department. We will also, the Rotary Club will be serving breakfast over here in the pavilion. The price of that will be $7. There will be a flag raising ceremony at 8:30. Then the festivities for the parade will begin. We always start out with our kids on their bike parade at 10:15. The parade begins at 10:30 and Surf and Swim will be open and our whole commons area then will, the carnival and vendor booths and concessions will take place right after the parade. And then that evening, we have a free concert at 8:00 PM in the Kenley Theater. The performers this year is going to be the Utah Broadway Stars Presents, The Spirit of Freedom. And of course, our fireworks take place at 10:00 PM. But prior to that, as a council and myself, we like to acknowledge our hometown heroes and we've had the opportunity to recognize some of them at this point. We will be going around and identifying a few more. So the Sunday before will be a special concert at 7:00 PM at the Kenley Theater where we'll be able to honor those hometown heroes and we would like everyone to join us. Council, do you have any other announcements you'd like to share with them at this time?
I think one thing that we didn't mention that's happening for the 4th of July is on July 3rd, we have our All-Star baseball game.
Yes.
The night before and that'll be at 6:00 PM, so we're excited that that's back.
And the kids get to participate in the parade. The other thing I want to mention also, I know it's after the 4th of July, but it's when we, people ask, when is our Leighton Fest start? We always start it the Friday after the 4th of July because we're so taxed getting ready for the 4th that it's good to start it after that, so that will then continue each Friday afterwards. Okay, is there any other announcements here? Okay, seeing that there's none, let's go ahead then and go on to our citizens comment portion of our meeting. This is the time when you as residents may get up and voice your concerns or recommendations for us. We ask that you stop, step up to the mics and state your name and if you could, you know, we prefer that you limit your comments to three minutes, but you know, it's, I will determine that as well, however, we do have a clock here. So if you're going to comment on anything regarding our public hearing portion of our meeting, you can wait until that time and we will open it up for public comment on those specific items that are listed on our agenda. Otherwise, the time is now yours. And please keep in mind that we really don't get into a dialogue, but we keep track of everything. Thank you.
I'll be quick. My name is Jennifer Bizano. I live here in Leighton and I would like to open by saying I appreciate the work it takes to be on this city council and part of city government. I've sat on many boards over the years and I know it's a thankless, difficult job because you can't make everybody happy. So that being said, I was present for the work meeting and I would like to point out a few things I felt were left out that were pretty clear when we heard this presentation the first time over in Parks and Rec.
Okay.
So benefits are far greater than dogs' socialization and dogs being able to run. Benefits are owners can socialize, it gets the citizens out in another way that have dogs together in a common area that have common interests. But most importantly, when you have an off-leash dog park in a city, the decline in calls to animal control is significant. Off-leash dogs are in every park in the city because people don't have a place to take their dogs. Barking dogs, ask animal control, somebody should check into that. We've talked to them on our side. The dropping calls is very significant. Secondly, I do think it's a little bit irresponsible and kind of shocking, frankly, to hear Leighton City say, "Well, there's other dog parks 16 minutes away." Okay, but you're the biggest city in the county. Why are you pushing off your responsibility for your citizens to neighboring cities, smaller cities that don't have the infrastructure and the trail systems that Leighton already has in place? The reason Bountiful City struggles with their dog park is because they're pulling in North Salt Lake, they're pulling in Centerville, they're pulling in Farmington, they're pulling in Leighton City residents. They can't handle it. It's tiny. They shouldn't have to keep up with us. The amount of high-density housing that's coming into Leighton City at an alarming rate, I'm a fan of because I believe in it. People need a place to live. We've got apartments coming in, we've got townhouses, we've got condos, as fast as we can build them, as fast as you can let those developers go. They have dogs. All of them have dogs. Thank you COVID. Everybody has a dog. Lastly, the trail situation is a perfect scenario. Somebody made a comment that it might be off-putting for people without dogs to come to that trail on maybe, the even days dogs are allowed or the hours dogs are allowed. They have 1,000 places to go. We don't. We have the perfect trail system infrastructure already set up to make it viable for a section to be for off-leash dogs. So I would just ask that you genuinely look into this and please try and find an option. We have so many empty parks. Thank you. I appreciate your time, I really do.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name's Jean Medbury and I am new to Leighton. I've been here just a few months and when I attempted to attend the last meeting, the GPS took me to a wrong, to the wrong place and I spent probably a good half hour trying to find where we're at tonight. So I'm happy we're meeting tonight and I didn't miss anything last time. But being new to the community, one of the things you do is you drive around, you find where the grocery store's at, where the library's at, where the parks are at, and where's the dog park? And I was shocked to find out that Leighton doesn't have a dog park. The community that I moved from in Colorado, the population is 81,000. Leighton's a little bit larger than that, but about the same size. We had three dog parks. We had one dog park that was like a nice open space where you could go for a hike and it backed up to open space where you could then put your dog on a leash and go hiking with your dog. It got the vinegar out. The other dog park was a community dog park, right near where the soccer fields are at and they would alternate dog, they would alternate having the fields back and forth for keeping the grass fresh. There were small dog park section and a large dog park section. The dog parks were part of the community where the Boy Scouts would build the agility field, having a wall, a memorial wall, or getting bricks to help fund the taking care of the dog park. We had a little place where you could keep your toys at. It really was a nice sense of community and it wasn't just that everybody was part of that. I'm going to add that I am currently not a dog owner, so I'm, I was very shocked and when I told other people that I worked with that I was coming here tonight, they're like, "You're kidding, Leighton doesn't have a dog park?" So I really feel that a dog park is very important. It's going to bring community together. It's a place where people can, dogs and people can join together. You have a lot, people with mental health issues, a lot of times they just stay inside and if they have a dog, they don't have any other communication. They come to the dog park and they make friends with other people. People will gather at dog parks at the same time and have, make that a ritual for the community. So it is a very strong sense of community to have a dog park. I would be happy, I have been to so many different dog parks. If you go to Colorado Springs, Bear Creek Dog Park is an awesome, awesome dog park with hiking trails, rivers that the dogs can run in. They've got a small section, a large section, a play, an area with agility. They've got a little playground for kids to play in where their dogs are out running, doing what dogs do and people do. So there's so many opportunities and doing some research before coming here, just the next state over, four hours away, I understand Boise's got like a world-class dog park. Leighton could be the next world-class dog park. So I guess my three minutes are up, so. But I did put together a little handout for everybody with some selling points of why we need, why Leighton needs a dog park.
You can hand them there. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, that's the same. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I have been to previous meetings as a Farmington resident, but I am, as of two weeks ago, I'm now a Leighton resident. So I'm proud of that, except that I don't think you're meeting the needs of Leighton residents by not having a dog park.
Do you mind stating your name?
Oh, I'm Megan Smock. So yeah, and I just, I did both of what they said, I agree fully. And I did appreciate the presentation, both the previous presentation on dog parks and the one tonight. But I do agree, it didn't mention nearly the benefits that our group has presented to all of you multiple times. And there are many, many benefits, as been mentioned, like community, it's good for the mental health of humans and animals. And yeah, there's, there's many, many, many more benefits than were mentioned. Yes, there are challenges, yes, there are risks, but there are many benefits. It was mentioned that Bountiful said, "Don't do it," but I, again, I think that's because they are the only one that is trying to carry the whole city. And sure, there might be, like the smaller cities might not have the room or the capacity, but Leighton does and should be taking that responsibility, especially for being in the middle of the county. Like this would be a central place for people and their dogs to come and have a really nice, like fully functional, big enough space to spread that out so that the one at the bottom of the county and one at the top of the county aren't so overwhelmed. It was mentioned that Farmington took theirs out and didn't replace it because it was too hard or too much maintenance, but I'm pretty sure they did that because they weren't making money and needed to build the new park, the new building. And so that was why. But I do, I, I have been told that there are plans to put one in Farmington, so they are stepping up and taking that responsibility. But yeah, I think that, that Leighton, for the size that it has and the number of people that are in it and the number of dogs that are in it, not having a dog park is not serving them well. It's like building a building without a parking lot. Like it, it's not, it's not functional, it's not enough for Leighton. Leighton deserves better. So yeah, I really do think that we can do better and it is a huge need and it is, there is a lot of benefit and it can be done. And as mentioned, like there's scout programs and people that can build and donate and it doesn't have to be all on Leighton City specifically, there's ways to do that. So that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Garner, I live in Leighton. Let me be quick, I have dogs and I will not come to the government to expect you to build me a dog park. I know that you guys have to plan for the people who don't take good care of their dogs and I know that's not any of you. I'm sure you take great care of your dogs. But anyway, so I was, the part that I was surprised about is someone said something about, can you tell me about liability? And the presenters didn't have any information on liability. So I would just hope that you would wait for that data to make any decisions because decisions or data drives the best decisions. I am also super excited, I got to brag about Leighton at our Davis County Commissioners Meeting. I heard we were completely out of debt and I was like, "Davis County, be like Leighton." Anyway, it was amazing. You guys are doing such a great job and that makes me really happy as a taxpayer that doesn't live in Colorado, by the way. No, I know, but they pay higher taxes. So I just wanted to bring to your attention, if you haven't seen it already, Spencer Cox, our governor, released an executive order with some things in it that weren't quite true. He said that Utah's one of the fastest-growing states in the nation and our population growth is the demand for more housing, transportation, water, energy, open space, recreation, and with these kind of restricted resources, he's kind of taking over planning for some of the cities and counties. So I would look at that and, you know, point him to the Constitution, but I would also mention that, that some of this data isn't true. So the Kemsey Gardner Institute for years has been saying, "Oh, we're going to have a million new people in Utah," and that has never happened. It's never happened that in one year, we're going to get 1 million new people. So as we're looking at housing, as we're looking at water usage, I would ask that the city requires the data on how many of those high-density housing units? What's their occupancy level? Because they're taking longer to fill up than anticipated and you can even ask any of the landlords, "Hey, how long does that take?" Like is, are they even full? They're not full, yet we're building more and more and more. Well, who are those people for? And when people want houses versus stack and pack them, then the materials are more expensive to build actual housing that becomes more affordable. So I would just, when Spencer Cox comes in with his demands and things like that, I would just ask him for more data and, and have data drive those decisions. And thanks again for being out of debt, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I'm Orlando. You don't need to know my last name. Want to tell you why I think a dog park's a good idea. I live by Central Davis Junior High and that Cresview Elementary School there. There are dogs all day long in that field. People don't take care of them. They leave their crap everywhere from them dogs, the dog crap. It's, they, we need a place that's safe for them to go, to go play with them dogs. I love dogs, I have two of my own. I think we need a better environment for them, so them fields should be out there for the kids to play in and not have to run in all that stuff. I think it would be beneficial for Leighton City. We do have all these condominiums and houses coming in that people do have dogs in. And there is no place for anyone to take their animals. We love our animals just like children. So I'd like to have that park just to take care of our animals and not have our, I mean, they won't even allow us in the park over here anymore, which is, I think, crap. But whatever. I have a service dog, so I'll take it in there, but others can't. And that's a beautiful walkway and we can't even do that. We need to have places for our animals to take them because with all these condos and everything else, it does really ruin the beauty of Leighton. And I've lived here for 40 something years. So I think it would be beneficial for a lot of people to have that park. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, I want to thank everyone for voicing their opinion tonight. Like I said, this is a topic that we know, we've asked for an in-depth study, which we've gone through, so we'll determine the outcome here at a, at a future date. Meanwhile, let's go ahead and move on to our consent items tonight. We have two items and as I've mentioned many times before, we can actually take action on both of these items in one single motion. So to start off, we'll go ahead and go with item number A, which Mr. Tracy Probert's going to present this item to us, and it's regarding our amended sewer rate and other fees.
Mayor, members of the council, pleasure to be with you here tonight. We didn't have a chance to go over some of these changes in the fees and the consolidated fee schedule in the work meeting, so I'll go over those briefly with you here in the council meeting. This document here that I've put up front just had, it only has the pages that have changes on it, not the entire consolidated fee schedule. The first change proposed is to take out the word "annual" under urban chicken annual permit fee so that it's just a one-time fee, not an annual fee. On the next page, under the fire department, some of the changes there are to increase the cost for fire standby services at special events. You can see those changes from $75 to $85, a two-hour minimum, and then some of the equipment, if provided at those events, ambulances, fire engines. And all of this based on, you know, analysis of the cost of having personnel and equipment present at these types of special events. Another item on this page is related to fire review fee for building and businesses in unincorporated areas of the county. There's been an agreement put in place so that now we need a fee related to those reviews of building permits and so forth. You can see those listed for small, medium, and large buildings. Also a fee for fire inspection in unincorporated areas of the county and for additional inspections in unincorporated areas of the county. Also under fire training tower, is that on this page? Let's see, yeah, must be. Oh yeah, there it is in the middle, sorry. So in order to do training at the tower, $85 per hour, up from $75 per hour. And then also if you, if training is required with live fire, that's going to go from 1,000 per four-hour session to 1,200 per four-hour session. Under the standby fee that was part of a fee by itself, that's eliminated from the fee schedule because it's now incorporated into that that I just mentioned up above. And then also emergency responder communication coverage system. There's a plan review, final inspection fee, and a reinspection fee that have been asked for by the fire department. We discussed this next one in a previous meeting under the budget, sanitary sewer service. The North Davis, North Davis Sewer District proposes a $2.50 increase in the monthly fee for sewer service. They've actually adopted that fee already. And then our budget proposes a $2.64 increase based on the plan that we brought forward to you last year in a three-year increase in the sewer system. That will result in a $5.14 increase in the sanitary sewer fee per month in the city and also a 25 cent per 1,000-gallon increase for commercial and churches, schools, motels, hotels, those types of entities. They pay an excess consumption fee in the off-summer months and so that fee goes up. That's part of North Davis Sewer's fee increase. Under planning and zoning, they've asked to remove the landscape buffer fencing modifications and waiver fee. That fee is no longer allowed under our ordinance and so we need to take it out of the fee schedule. They've also removed a line item in here that says if annexation and rezone are combined, because of the way the code works for approving annexations, there's some timing differences that don't allow those to be combined together efficiently and so that fee is, they've asked to remove that fee from the schedule. Related to pool construction, there's been a problem in the past with paying, having pool contractors be charged a fee for building a pool, but then at times not completing that pool fully for the final inspection. And so it's proposed that we have... be able to have a refund of that bond. As far as street signs are concerned, and, let's see, did I forget? Subdivision street sign fees, there's an increase in those. Public Works did an analysis of those fees. You'll see that for a subdivision street sign, it was $90. They're increasing that to $315. The problem being that the pole alone probably costs $90. And so we've been undercharging for a number of years when those get hit by a car because they slid off the road or in a traffic accident, or for whatever reason, someone just decides to break one and bust it or whatever. We've now analyzed the actual costs of not only producing the sign, but installing that sign, removing of the old sign. And so the other one would be regulatory signs within subdivisions from $65 to $375. These fees, these increased fees also allow us that if there's subrogation with insurance, we have the appropriate amount in our fee schedule so that we can recuperate an amount from someone's insurance company as well, and the city isn't out money in those areas. Those are the fee changes that are proposed with ordinance 25-15. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Mayor, thank you.
Sure.
Tracy, the, the fire service fees for unincorporated areas, is that, have, how did that come about? Did they ask us to do that? The county or the state? And how often?
I believe the counties approached us and asked us to, through a inter-local agreement or memorandum of understanding, to be able to do, provide those services for them for a fee. Yes?
Okay. Thank you.
My question is piggybacking on that. Is the county also the entity, or are there other multiple entities that would ever be renting out the fire training tower? Who's, who's renting that?
Yes. Other entities do lease out the fire training tower. I believe, I believe we're the only one in the county, and so other fire services do come and participate in training activities there.
Any other questions?
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know Weston's going to be presenting our next item, which is an annexation request for the Love Valley, Love Valley View area.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Before you tonight is a proposal for an annexation that is 2.096 acres, located approximately 90, excuse me, 940 north East Side Drive. The petitioner is Eric Crathorne, who's representing the property owner, Crathorne Development. The purpose of this annexation petition is to begin the process for a residential subdivision in the RS residential subdivision zone. Following the adoption of this resolution, staff will initiate the necessary annexation procedures as outlined in state code. Staff recommends the city council adopt Resolution 2514 to certify the petition for the annexation and direct staff to initiate the necessary annexation procedures. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions on this? This is just step one of three that they have to go through?
This is step two.
Step two.
We're, we're accepting the cer, yeah, we're accepting the certification.
Okay.
Good question.
Sure.
This, the sensitive lands area as well, is that?
The sensitive lands area. So it might be a little while before you see this come back to you for a, a full annexation and rezone request.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Well, thank you very much. That, I appreciate you guys making your presentation. That pretty much concludes our consent items. So Counsel, I'll bring it back to you for action regarding ordinance 2515 and Resolution 25-14.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept ordinance 25-15, the amendment of the sewer rates and other fees, and then Resolution 25-14, the annexation request for Love's Valley View.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. We'll now go on to our public hearing portion of our meeting. We do have four, five items on the, on the agenda tonight. We'll start out with Mr. Probert, who will present the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year ending 2425, or amending, I should say.
So Mayor members of the council, tonight we have ordinance 25-14 to amend the current year, which is fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. We have to do that every year towards the end of the year to make sure that everything's in line by state law. To summarize thing, the amendments that are proposed, in the general fund, there's 1.8 million, just over that, in net additions and reductions to the budget. 500,000 of that is appropriation of fund balance. Of that, I will admit that about 300,000 of that is a correction of something that I did with the original budget. The budget was there. I took some out. Now I had to put it back in, and I had to do that through an official action. So really, there's only two, about 200,000 in appropriation of fund balance, other than the original budget. Aside from that, you can see that there's 1.1 million in revenue that came into the city that we didn't originally have an estimate for, or we weren't able to anticipate how much that would be. That's in areas of wildland fire protection, police special services, the fire academy, and then other small donations. We also had 179,000 and a little in grant revenue that was unanticipated or for which we didn't have a preliminary estimate. And so those are the areas within the general fund that amendments are proposed to the current year budget. In other funds throughout the city, we have the Building Services Fund, 359,000, Class C Road Fund, 200,000, Davis Metro, 100,000, the Prop 1 Transit Fund, 286,000, and so on down the list. I don't know that I need to read the entire list to you, but you can see the various areas where different projects or other sources of revenue for which we did not have an original estimate came in throughout the year. And so an amendment to our budget is necessary in order to be in compliance with state law. Are there any questions regarding any of these amendments?
Any questions?
Tracy, I'll just bring up what I asked in the, in the work meeting, just for the benefit of the public. So, and you explained it very well here, that there are times when we don't have the, the data, I guess, or the, the information to say how much something is necessarily going to be. So you budget, you plan for it, and then when we get that information, we have to make adjustments to that. And so would you say that these items here are items of that nature, which is why you have all of these definitions here? Something came in, and now we have to make an amendment because we now know what the figures actually are?
Correct.
And then where we put any of that excess revenue that comes back? Where do we put those funds, and what do we generally do with them?
If there's excess revenue, then that will, in the general fund, it will go to our general fund reserve account and along with all these other funds. If there was actually excess revenue through that transaction, then it would fall to the reserve account and again would come back to the council in a subsequent year to be appropriated towards whatever the goals were for that year. For the most part, in these amendments, though, the city will front the expense because something comes up or there's a program, for example, wildland fire. You don't know when we're going to go out on one of those, right? But someone will call Leighton, and they'll say, hey, we can use you, a team of your people in southern Utah on this wildland fire. And then through the federal government or state funds, the city is reimbursed. And we do actually make a little bit of money on that, on those transactions. So it's not that city resources are just going out for free. One, I think if the chief were here, he would tell you something like that is extremely good hands-on training for his personnel because they get to experience the actual fire, right? And then they can bring that experience back here, and then they can use it if the, if that occurs here in the city, and they have expertise. But for the most part, you know, we'll spend the funds, send the people to go do the thing, and then we'll get reimbursed for that. Same with grants, the grants that I mentioned that we don't have an estimate for. A grant opportunity will come up, we'll be awarded the grant, we spend the city funds, and then we apply for reimbursement of those funds. So those are just two examples, but.
So thanks. I just wanted to applaud what you do, and also the city generally does pay for those items upfront, like you mentioned. And so that's why we don't have a whole lot of bonds and raising of taxes and things like that, because we try to put the money that we have to good use, and then if there are other options to take, to get reimbursed for that, then that's what we apply for. So thanks for explaining that.
Right. No problem.
Questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thanks. Tracy, yeah, to that, you mentioned the, the fund balances. Maybe for the benefit of, of those listening, we have reserve accounts, reserve balances. We have to have at least 5%, I believe.
Correct.
Up to 35%.
Up to 35% in the general fund, yes.
And so to, for rainy day funds and for other reasons, but there is a, a reason to keep those reserve funds. So just to maybe explain what kind of, where, I guess maybe you can with the, when, when we talk about the budget, maybe where we are as far as a percentage during that time.
Sure. We can do that during the budget. Sure.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I know this is a public hearing, so we can go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time and see if there's any comments regarding these amendments. So I look for a motion.
I move that we open the public hearing for ordinance 25-14.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. That passes. Let's go on to item number B then, which Mr. Probert's going to present this item as well, which is our proposed budget for the 26, 25, 26 year.
So upfront, I can address your question, Mayor members of the council, about reserves in the general fund. And so we can maintain as a city our reserve balance, or as you mentioned, rainy day fund, I guess we could call it, between 5% of revenues and 35% of revenues. I think it would be important for the citizens to know that, for the most part, Leighton City tries to keep our reserves around 15%. We feel like that's an adequate amount of reserve, but it also does not abuse the citizens by maintaining more of their money than we actually need or feel that we need based on our financial situation. Not to throw other cities under the bus, right? I won't name any, but there are a number of cities in the state that keep their reserves at the max, no matter what. And in crisis times, they'll lay people off, and then they'll bring people back on, right? And they'll raise taxes, and they'll do whatever they have to do to maintain 35% at all times. And that just simply isn't the way we function here in the city. We ask for what we need to maintain an excellent city, right? And, but we don't hold more of the citizens' cash than we feel is necessary, although it is important to keep a healthy reserve because we don't want to have to go back to the citizens in an emergency situation and, you know, increase taxes in an extreme way all of the sudden, when we could have been hopefully planning for that in advance. Anyway, that may be a longer answer than you wanted, but I think that it shows that we do a conservative and good job with the citizens' money, yet also try and plan for those emergencies that could happen. Tonight I have ordinance 25-13 to adopt, I have maybe the only copy so far of the, of the budget book. We used to print out a stack of these, and now it's just online, right? So you can see it online and so forth. But we bring that budget to you tonight. And just a quick overview, first off, as I, as I kind of alluded to, the budget does not include a property tax increase for 2025, 2026, which runs July 1st of this year until June 30th of next year. The general fund budget is just over 48 million, almost $49 million. The total citywide budget, which includes the utility funds, which make up most of the difference, $129.8 million. The budget does include a market cost of living and merit adjustment for the officers and employees of the city. That would be the municipal executive officers, not the council and mayor officers. There's 2.9 million in capital equipment, 23.6 million in capital projects, the majority of which are in the utility funds. I mentioned already the sewer rate increase by North Davis Sewer of $2.50, and the city side of that at $2.64. Major projects included, we're still working on the Emergency Communications Dispatch Center that's across the parking lot here, in case anybody wondered what that construction activity is. And most of that funding, I would mention also, is federal funding from CARES Act and ARPA, the city matching, you know, what we needed to in that. There's also a swimming pool dome project that's in these funds, part of the ramp funds, parks projects, street maintenance, and as I mentioned already, utility projects. Briefly, we can see the city revenue breakdown with a big chunk of that being sales tax. And so the city is positioned very well to benefit from having our neighbors come and shop in our city. And so we benefit greatly from that, having all of the different stores and amenities that we have here, restaurants and different things, so that the citizens actually benefit from having everyone around us come here to do their shopping and so forth. The charges for services section is mostly utility funds, and then there's some other taxes and things on there that make up smaller portions of the budget. You'll note that property tax makes up less than 9% of the total budget. As far as expenditures go, compensation makes up 44% of that. This is citywide, not just the general fund. Operations, just under 30%. Capital projects, 20% and so on. In the general fund, we can see that sales tax makes up a much larger portion of the general fund, almost 54%. Property tax making up 22% of the general fund. And then there's a number of other items on there that, that make up our total revenue in the general fund. As far as expenditures go, we have our police department making up 35%. In a previous meeting, Chief Mon referred, alluded, told us of the fact that fire is made up of two separate funds, that that's covered by the general fund, and then the emergency medical services fund, which is outside of the general fund. So it's not to say that police is gigantic compared to fire. They're very similar in size as far as the amount of expenditure that goes there. And then we have your other admin, mostly administrative departments, but, you know, Public Works and Parks and Recreation, a significant amount of funding going towards those as well. That would be my brief summary of our 106-page book of budget. I would point out that in the very front section of the budget book, or if anyone would go online to look at the budget, there, about page two, two through six, there's some summary financial statements. And they're probably the best place to look just to see, you know, if you know how to look at financial statements, then you could see an income statement, more or less in budget form, that could tell you where the city stands. Are there any questions related to the budget, property tax rate, and compensation schedules?
Any questions, Counsel?
I just want to state that this is the second time that this has been prepared or is available to us for public hearing. So we've seen this.
As far as expenditures go, we have our police department making up 35%. In a previous meeting, Chief Mon referred, alluded, told us of the fact that fire is made up of two separate funds, that that's covered by the general fund, and then the Emergency Medical Services Fund, which is outside of the general fund. So, it's not to say that police is gigantic compared to fire. They're very similar in size as far as the amount of expenditure that goes there, and then we have your other admin, mostly administrative departments, but, you know, Public Works and Parks and Recreation, a significant amount of funding going towards those as well. That would be my brief summary of our 106-page book of budget. I would point out that in the very front section of the budget book, or if anyone would go online to look at the budget, there, about page 2, 2 through 6, there's some summary financial statements, and they're probably the best place to look just to see, you know, if you know how to look at financial statements, then you could see an income statement, more or less in budget form, that could tell you where the city stands. Are there any questions related to the budget, property tax rate, and compensation schedules?
Any questions, council?
I just want to state that this is the second time that this has been prepared or is available to us for public hearing, so we've seen this, we saw this last time, so thank you again for presenting today.
Okay. There's no questions by the council. Is there any questions within the audience that wish to address item B? Okay, seeing that there's no questions, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council then to take action regarding the proposed budget or ordinance 25-13. We opened up...
Yeah, public hearing, it's already open, yeah.
We already opened it, and we kept it open.
It's already open.
I know that we kind of bounced, but tonight, we're keeping it all open, and that we'll vote on each one as we go along. Yeah, no problem. Okay. So, council, then, I'll bring it back to you for action.
I'd like to approve the ordinance, if I can see it, 25-13, which is our proposed budget.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve the, or adopt our proposed budget. Once again, this is a roll call item, so I'll start down here with Councilman Bloxham.
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Smith Edmondson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, there you have it. It passes unanimously. Okay, that takes care of item A and B. We'll go on to item C of our public hearing, and Weston's gonna actually present the next three items, but we'll start out with, the first one is easement vacation for the Tzak subdivision.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. Before you tonight is an application brought to us by Phil Holland, who's representing the HR Rosewood LLC Group. He's requesting to vacate four public utility easements on these properties. This is located at 876 East Rosewood Lane and 942 East Rosewood Lane. So, I just wanted to give you a general overview of the easements that would be vacated. There's a blue easement there that's a five-foot public utility easement, a green easement that's a 10-foot public utility easement, and then two seven-foot that are side-by-side public utility easements. The purpose of this is for a subdivision to then take over this area, so these easements would be vacated, and then a new subdivision would be put in place with the easements that are standard for those subdivision lots. This is just a layout of the subdivision, and you, it's standard subdivision practice to have easements around all four sides of the lots. Staff recommends the council adopt ordinance 25-17 to vacate the certain public utility easements, public utility and drainage easements, excuse me, located at 876 and 942 East Rosewood Lane, subject to meeting all city requirements and conditions outlined in the staff memo. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councils, do you have any questions on this?
The question I have is, assuming this gets approved, what, how long is the process for something like this, this six-lot subdivision?
As soon as they're ready to record.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing that there're none, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for our public to make any comments regarding item number C on our public hearing. Once again, make sure you state your name.
Hello, I am Catherine Martinez. I reside at 957 East 250 South in Leighton, which in conjunction to this property, it is the directly south of this new subdivision, and connected on this map behind us on the very right corner. The Holmes Creek accesses our property and divides four of the lots behind the subdivision, and there is a gate behind my lot, which we have to access from Rosewood rather than We've had to regularly use that gate to access the property that I reside on that is divided by that creek. My house sits on the south side, my backyard is on the north side, there's the creek in the middle. So, the only way to get to that backside, which we've had to do maintenance regarding the retaining walls for that creek, I understand we don't have any water rights, but as the resident of the, and owner of the property, we do have to shore both sides of those, of the creek, which ensures the safety of our property. We've had flooding issues, that is where we have access to drop sand off for sandbagging. I've had, like I said, lots of large equipment that has had to access through there. There's four houses along that side, if I didn't mention that already, that utilize that easement. It's been horse property, we love that. I welcome the new subdivision. I just hope that there is a way that we can come to an agreement or a mutual understanding that there is most likely gonna be more maintenance. It's, if you're not familiar with that area, it's much like Leighton City Park here, along the creek. We have very large cottonwood trees. We're not immune to wind in this area. We've had trees fall over, we have to maintain those, top them, keep them healthy in order to ensure the safety of people, houses, property. So, I just would ask that we put a pause on any vacating easements for further review and consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, any questions, council?
Yeah, can you answer?
So, this, this subdivision has gone through the subdivision review process. This would just be vacating the easements to put, to allow the new ones to be put in place. As far as maintenance, let me see if I can, let me get the mouse and see if I can zoom in on that a little.
While he's doing that, I'm just gonna make a comment. I'm not, I can't remember what she mentioned the nature of the easement was. If it's a, if it's a private easement, that doesn't have anything to do with us, and that wouldn't be impacted by whatever happens here. A public utility easement, as Weston has explained, whatever is vacated here is just to allow for the development of that property. There will be new public utility and drainage easements that will be included as, with the new developments, which I think is what you're about to zoom in on right now.
Yeah, that's accurate, and this is, this is the area that we're talking about. This is that you can see Zone X, this is the floodway and the way the creek runs, and that is accurate, and the public utility easements is all we're talking about, not, and that's a standard easement. We're not talking about any additional easements that are associated with the property or private easements.
So, if there were private, if there were a private easement or private easements, that, that wouldn't, we don't really have anything to do with those. That would be something between two private property owners. We don't get involved in private easements, and so that would be something that, that would be, if they have that, that would be a right that they could assert against that property owner or have a discussion with about that to the, to the property owner.
So, I think the question becomes the access point, though. Does the access point remain the same on their property? Right?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't, I don't know where the access point is now. I think that's, this, I've never heard of this before. Have you, have you guys heard of this?
I've not heard of this, as you know.
Which one is it? Did you say Martinez?
Believe, is this your property? Is this correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And the creek goes through the...
Maybe if you could come up to the mic, so, yeah. You can come over to this side, so he can stay at the mic there.
The, my property is the one that is coming to a point in between 5 and 4. Correct. And the creek goes through the bottom corner of Lot 5, and then it makes a sharp turn and comes east, or excuse me, south down my neighbor to the east property, and then in my yard, makes another turn and heads back south. And we enter from Rosewood, approximately where that new little drive is, or called SAC, and we would drive through Lot 4, and then that, that shortest section of Lot 4 on the right side is right where our gate is. So, the drainage, I, I tried to get information, I, I contacted the information on the public notice and didn't get a response, because I wasn't sure where the easements for the county is located, but I'm assuming it's where the, you know, cement block drainage is, which is right at the corner of my property.
Do you know if you have a recorded easement?
Private?
Yeah, or just an easement that, meaning that there's some sort of a document that describes that?
I don't know if there is one in place. I just have coordinated with the previous owners. I've lived at that property for 21 years, owned that house, so we've just coordinated with those property owners whenever it's needed.
So, I, Mayor, I think in this one, it might be good to table this and allow us to have those discussions with the developer, and, like I said, we don't always get involved, we don't, we don't get involved in private easement discussions, but without knowing more about it, I'd like to know more.
I, I think that's pretty critical, knowing that this is the Case Creek, and it, there is maintenance all the way along that creek, so there's gotta be some point of entrance, I believe.
Yeah, so I would recommend that the council just table this to a future agenda, allow us to take a look at it, have some conversations with the developer and, and other property owners to make sure that they're at least communicating.
Okay, that's fair. Okay. Okay, with that, is there any other comment before I bring it back to the council then? Okay, seeing that there's none, council, I would need you to make a formal action based upon the recommendation from our attorney.
Madam Mayor, I move that we table item C, the easement vacation, which is ordinance 25-17, to a future council meeting to give staff time to, do I need to have an actual Or do I say a date uncertain?
No, that's fine. We're just...
You're not in line.
It's a public hearing, so we just probably...
Just leave the public hearing open.
Continue, yeah, continue the public hearing as well.
Okay. So, in addition, so table this and continue, or just continue the public hearing and not take action on item C?
Yeah, that's fine. Continue and not take action.
Okay. All right, Madam Mayor, I move that we keep the public hearing open for ordinance 25-17 and continue this item to a later date.
Okay.
To give staff time to coordinate with the developer and the homeowners to get more information.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we table item C at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We will do, do that then, and go ahead and move on to item D, which is another easement vacation for, I know, east, for a Lot 8 of East Leighton Hills, subdivision number 6.
Correct. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. This is at, as you said, East Leighton Hills, number 6. The applicant is Keith Bennett. The purpose of this easement, excuse me, the vacation of the public utility and drainage easement is to realign a property line, so the green is where the existing easement exists, and that's a public utility easement running on both sides of the property line. So, the property line runs in the middle of that green, and it would be shifting to the orange. So, this is technically a flag lot. It's kind of a weird-shaped lot, but the, their purpose of this is to do in addition to the side of their home, so it allows them to, to have the room to be able to complete the addition that they're looking to do. Staff recommends the council adopt ordinance 25-18 to vacate this public utility and drainage easement and locate, easement located at 2025 and 2033 East Dan Drive, Lot 7 and Lot 8, East Leighton Hills, number 6, subject to meeting all city requirements and conditions as outlined in the staff memorandum. Any questions?
Any questions on this?
I'm on a roll tonight.
Yeah, that's okay.
I just wanted to know if the owner is the same for both lots?
Yes.
Okay.
Makes it simple. Okay, any other questions? Okay, how about any public comments? Anyone wish to comment on this item?
I'm curious.
Okay, seeing that there's no comment, let me go ahead and bring it back to the council to go ahead and make a decision on item D, which is ordinance 25-18.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 25-18.
Okay, is there a second?
There is.
Okay, it's been moved in second on this. Once again, I'll do a roll call vote on this then, so let's start out with Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Smith Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Comus?
Aye.
And Councilman Bloxham?
Yes.
Okay, there you have it. It's unanimous. Okay, we'll go on to item number E, which is our last public hearing item. Once again, it's a vacation for Lot 68 of the Leighton Hill, or Leighton Industrial Park, subdivision number 2.
The applicant is Blake Mattson, and they are representing Liberty Rentals, and they are requesting to vacate three public utility easements along the property located at 820 North Marshall Way, also, also known as Lot 68 of the Leighton Industrial Park Amendment 2. What would be vacated here is a five-foot public utility and drainage easement along the north of the property line, which is the top part of your screen, a five-foot public utility drainage easement along the eastern portion, and a 12-and-a-half-foot public and utility drainage easement along the south property line. This is allowing them room to construct the buildings that they're wanting to construct. It also is coming into compliance with our requirements for public utility easements on commercial properties. Typically, we don't have this many on commercial properties. There is one easement that is staying, and as I get older, it's hard for me to read that, but it's that bottom easement. It is a, I believe it's a sewer easement that it's in favor of the adjacent property.
Storm drain.
Storm drain, thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends the council adopt ordinance 25-16 to vacate certain public utility and drainage easements located at the 820 North Marshall Way, Lot 68, Leighton Industrial Park Amendment Number 2 subdivision, subject to meeting all city requirements and conditions as outlined in the staff memorandum.
Okay, any questions, council? Nope. Okay, how about any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing that there's none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council for action on item number E.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 25-16, the easement vacation, Lot 68 of the Leighton Industrial Park Amendment 2, number 2 subdivision.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and once again, I'll do a roll call vote on this. Let's count, let's start off with Councilmember Smith Edmondson.
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
And Councilmember Bloxham?
Yes.
Oh, there you have it. Okay, that pretty much concludes our public hearing. However, we do need to close it. We do have one item that will remain open, so who's ever willing to make the motion to close our public hearing, please also state that we will keep item C open. Challenge.
Madam Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing for ordinance 25-14, 25-13, 25-18, and 25-16, and leave the public hearing open for ordinance 25-17, as previously stated.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, I will acknowledge this. You wanna take a, let's just say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you have it. We will close our public hearing at this time. That's actually our last item on our agenda for tonight, unless there's any unfinished business. Council, do you have any unfinished business you'd like to discuss at this time?
Well, it's only 8:14, so, I'm sorry, we have to stay here longer.
The only thing that I'll, that I'll mention is, obviously, we have our July 4th holiday coming up. We do have a council meeting... coming up. We do have a council meeting the night before. However, depending on how much information, at this time, it doesn't look like we have enough to really hold a council meeting. So I would say that the chances of us having that public hearing, or I mean, that council meeting are probably slim, unless you guys want to go ahead and take action right now and say that we'll not have that public, or geez, not have our council meeting for July 3rd.
I make a motion, we don't have our council meeting on July 3rd, and I also make, maybe they're too separate, to adjourn the meeting as soon as we vote on that.
Okay. So, council, are you good with this?
I don't think you need to vote on it, just, if that works, then that's great.
Yeah. I'd say, are we good with that? If that be the case, I do know that there's a lot of preparation the night before, that unfortunately, Councilmember Roberts is not here, and myself. I know we could use some help getting ready for the popscles. So we will still be able to at least help out the city that way. Okay, then, I will acknowledge that motion to adjourn.
With a second.
Okay, with a second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
That's your vote. Yay, he's in on the action. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for attending our council meeting this evening, and we hope you have a safe evening and weekend. Thank you.